Okay, I just got the word that we are good to go. Live to get started, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Markarian. The board has already met in a good evening, everyone, apologies. The board has already met in executive session and saluted the flag at that time. So Mr. Syatt is kindly sitting in for us in place of Mr. McLaughlin this evening. Mr. Syatt, could we have a roll call, please?
Sure. Ms. Beckman?
Here.
Ms. Schaefer?
Here.
Mr. Salmon?
Here.
Ms. White?
Here.
Ms. McKeown?
Here.
Ms. Richmond?
Here.
Ms. Corn? Ms. Corn? I see you. I see her. We'll count that as here. Ms. Woolridge?
Here.
Ms. Gray?
Here.
Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Syatt. I'm sorry. Good evening, everyone, once again. This is a regular meeting of the Board of Education of Bernard's Township. Notice of the time and the place of the meeting was provided, and copies of that resolution were forwarded to the official newspapers as designated by the Board of Education and to the township clerk. And a copy of the notice was posted on the bulletin board at the Board of Education offices in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. Pardon me. Due to that public health emergency in the state of New Jersey as declared in Executive Order 103, the board will be suspending its normal meeting procedures this evening and conducting this virtual meeting. Directions for accessing the virtual public meeting were posted on the district website, The same directions were posted at our intended but unavailable meeting location. We very much welcome public input. Because this is a virtual meeting, public comment will be handled as follows. Email to btconnect@bernardsboe.com or text to 908-292-3047. Use "public comment" as the email subject or the start of the text message. Indicate your first and last name and address. This is required for your public comment to be included. Please keep your comments to a maximum of approximately three minutes if read aloud. Individuals are permitted a maximum of one public comment during public comment on agenda items and another one public comment during public comment on non-agenda items. The board reserves the right to limit the length of the time allotted for public comment for both agenda and non-agenda item comments. In the event that time limitations prohibit the reading of the public comment received pursuant to these instructions, the comment will be published as part of the meeting minutes. No public comments will be accepted before 7:00 PM or after Item 19, Board Form on the Agenda, begins. With that, we're going to move on to our student representative, Juliette.
Hi, thank you so much for having me again. Obviously, in the past couple of weeks, we've started our gradual return to normalcy. So a lot of the kids, a lot of my friends have been back in school, and it's generally gone pretty well. The biggest thing we saw is that from last week to this week, there's a definite improvement, which is a really good sign. There's been a real consistency at the high school level of everyone keeping their masks on, which a lot of people were really happy to see. A lot of the rules were being followed. At first, there were some issues that the teachers had with accommodating both the in-school and virtual students, because it's sort of hard to teach at the same time. But there's been steps towards improving that, like having the multi-directional microphones or having, you know, sort of varied activities. So there might be some issue going forward, but it's definitely being focused on and addressed. Additionally, there's some difficulty, like confusion over the advisory periods or in excess of testing on the virtual Wednesdays. And lastly, I heard reports from freshmen that they didn't get as lost as they expected, which I was happy to hear, that they were able to navigate Ridge successfully. Outside of the classroom, we saw last Friday our first football game returned successfully, along with the marching band and cheerleaders, which came along with it. We were happy to see that sort of go off without a hitch. Additionally, there were a couple of other clubs and activities that are continuing to accommodate virtually. For example, Forensics had their Yale Intitational, at which Ridge once again did very successfully. So we're sort of happy to hear that although it's really, you know, strange circumstances, a lot of people are doing the best they can to accommodate. So it's both been successful in person with a lot of adjustments and a lot of new opportunities, as well as chasing those similar opportunities virtually.
Thank you for that fantastic report. It sounds like some good news in there. Does anyone have any questions for Juliette? Board members? Okay. I don't see any hands. So we're going to move on to our board presentation. Oh. Did I get? Oh, no, I think we're good. We have an SEL update and instructional coaching update. And I'm going to, am I passing it to Mr. Markarian or Ms. Smith?
Thank you, Madam President. We're very excited tonight. We have with us three guest speakers, and I just wanted to thank them for being here and for preparing this presentation for everyone this evening. Our Director of School Counseling, Stephanie Smith, is going to kick things off and emcee a little bit by sharing her screen. And also, our two instructional coaches are here, Ms. Kiara Kupiak and Ms. Vicky Daglian. And I just wanted to also thank Mr. Syatt, who I know worked with Kiara and Vicky and Stephanie to kind of organize and help them understand what it is that the board was looking for. So thank you to Mr. Syatt in that regard. And with that, I'll turn things over to Ms. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Markarian. I'll go ahead and share my screen. So thank you again for the opportunity tonight. Our presentation this evening is really about support. And tonight, we will share with you the social and emotional resources that we have in district for students, for parents and families, and for staff as well. And really just taking the opportunity to publicly highlight these resources so that folks are familiar with what's available. We also will hear about the support that our dynamic instructional coaches provide across the district. So as Mr. Markarian noted, tonight I am joined by Mrs. Vicky Daglian, the Instructional Coach for grades K through 5, Mrs. Kiara Kupiak, Instructional Coach for 6 through 12, and Mr. Sean Syatt, our Assistant Superintendent. So as I mentioned, the purpose of tonight's presentation is really to take the opportunity to publicly highlight the, really, the reservoir of resources that are available to students, families, and to staff. Everything that I will walk you through this evening is really, you know, representative of many great minds at work and a lot of dedicated staff members who really helped to pull all of this together and to bring it alive. So first, we will start off with our resources that we have specifically for our staff when it comes to social and emotional well-being and wellness. This summer, there were a few different staff colleges that were offered specifically on wellness for the staff. As we know, that as adults, as we take care of ourselves, we are better able and positioned to support our students and do the important work of supporting our students and our families. Specifically, there were staff colleges that highlighted trauma-informed practices, grief sensitivity, and really preparing for this return to school and the 2020-2021 school year that was unlike any other. To that end, Kristin Fox and I gathered a group of individuals across the district, about 30 different representatives across different disciplines and professionals, teachers, speech therapists, school psychologists, counselors, different folks from each school. And grade band came together to form what we coined our SEL Task Force. And so for five weeks this summer, this group really focused in on the numerous resources that were coming our way, be it from NJ DOE, CASL, the Collaborative for Academic, Social, and Emotional Learning, from the American School Counseling Association, from the National Association of School Psychologists. There were numerous resources and guidelines available for helping us to open up this school year and helping us to prioritize our work. So the task force really narrowed down what we called three priorities for opening the school year. The first priority, and this is what I'll walk you through. The first priority was creating a virtual opportunity for connection and wellness amongst the staff. And so we were not able to do our typical kickoff of the year or convene people together for obvious reasons. And so we worked hard to get input from that task force to do this in some sort of virtual capacity. And I'll walk you through what that looked like. The second priority that we came up with was establishing a resource center for specific strategies, be it school-wide strategies for knowing what to do in certain situations, who your resources are at your school as a staff, and really just a center for information, for strategies to use with kids, no matter what walks through the door, given such a challenging time that we're in. And we also prioritize communicating these resources, such as we're doing tonight, and the support structures that students, parents, and families have within the community and within our district staff as well. So going back up to number one, we worked to create a virtual opportunity for connection and wellness. And as I mentioned, when we started, this really has been a team effort of so many people. And so this first link here is called our Wellness Activity Choice Board. And so we wanted to update the board and share with the board that the entire staff participated in these two activities. So the first, the Wellness Activity Choice Board, the staff had a choice between participating in yoga sessions that were led by Kim Clark, one of the health and PE teachers at Ridge High School. And so we thank Kim for giving of her time, really, in offering numerous different sessions for staff to sign up for yoga, if that appealed to them. Kathleen Duzabaut, an Assistant Principal at Ridge High School, also offered several different sessions on meditation. And so staff can come together for their own wellness, and she's fantastic at guided meditation. And she offered those sessions to staff. If neither of those were the, what the staff wanted to participate in, they could participate in a series of TED Talks. And so they can watch a couple of different TED Talks that were helpful to them, that obviously focused on wellness and educator well-being. And we even featured as a suggestion one of the TED Talks from Dr. Lazovic, the Principal of Ridge High School. So the Choice Board, as you can see there, was really a collaborative work between all of the people that jumped on board to provide those opportunities, and we're thankful for them. The task force also was really specific in voicing that they did not want a virtual opportunity that was, you know, watch this webinar or something as direct and simple as that. They wanted something that really brought people together and really challenged our thinking in this difficult time. So Kristin and I shared that, and we were, you know, merely the vessels to share that information with our instructional coaches. And Kiara Kupiak was critical in bringing that to life. And so I'll walk you through what we had the staff participate in. And again, this was the entire staff. And so we did ask everyone to take a course. And so at the opening of the school year, everyone had until the end of September. And we've given some extra time for some folks that are still completing. But the name of the course is called Mining the Cave of Self. And so this really is symbolic of the cenotes in the peninsula off of Mexico and really just the journey of empowerment. And so this idea that there is a wellspring within you that you nurture and you take care of, and that is your source of resiliency to get through challenging times. So the course curriculum that was established by our instructional coaches with the input of the staff who gave their time on the task force, is really all about resilience. And so part of this work, as I walk you through here, you could see that there's a lot of discussion on resilience, as I mentioned, and it's based off of a book titled Onward: Cultivating Emotional Resilience in Educators. So we walk the staff through a series of TED Talks and different resources reflecting on your stressors, through Stress Diary activity, and examining what is called the Window of Tolerance in Psychology. So how trauma affects your window of tolerance, whether you are hyper or hypo aroused in terms of your stressors, and how you work and strategies that you can use to navigate getting yourself into that ideal zone, that window of tolerance that you can see on the screen. So we had some prompting questions for the staff. You know, where are you in relation to that window? And how are you doing? And any thoughts that you have that may be a direct consequence of the stressors that surround you? How can you challenge that thinking to be as resilient and positive as you can be in such a difficult time? And so the staff participated in a challenge that thought activity as well. The coaches were also able to end the opportunity with a note from a personal video from the author of the book Onward. So those two activities that you see in number one were how we kicked off the year specific to our staff in service this year. So we are thankful to everyone that contributed to those opportunities and are obviously hopeful that the staff, you each take away something that is helpful to you as you work through the various activities. As I mentioned, the second priority of the group was to establish a hub of resources and strategies. So I'll walk you through our staff Distance Learning Hub. So this is for staff only. And the wellness section is dedicated to educator supports, no matter what your role. And so these are really practices. If you click on any of these links, there are specific strategies and practices to cultivate this wellness in yourself, whether you are feeling disconnected from others when it comes to distance, how to practice self-compassion, building connections, and really applying all of these strategies that we think about and read about for students and each other and applying it to oneself. For our caregivers, our child study team, our school counselors, our SACS, we also have specific tips to care for them as well. Again, different resources for educator resilience specific to self-care assessments that you can work through for those of you who like some metrics or some guidelines to understand or to explore these resources. As it was published last year, we have our virtual relaxation room, which you can explore and really tap into some different resources available to you, whether it be through music or activity. Highlighted for our staff are the three grade band sites for elementary, middle, and high school counseling. So you can see that resources start to narrow in on the developmental stage of the children. And so whether the staff are looking for this in their own practice or they're looking at it from a parent lens, there are different resources available, whether it be articles or specific activities that you can print out and use at home related to coping skills, growth mindset, dealing with social distancing, grief and loss, coping with disappointment, anxiety, stress management, just to name a few. And again, all of that is organized by developmental level and what's appropriate for the children. We also talked a lot this summer as a group about quick links and strategies. So the team broke off into school-level groups and worked on if-then charts and what to do, like I mentioned, in specific situations if you need some support at the specific school level. And then also, we have here a list of different links and strategies if teachers or staff are looking for social and emotional strategies to use within their practice, within their work directly with students. So I'll just highlight one to name a few. Each of these links you can explore further and farther for more specific resources. It was important to the group that you had something that you could get your hands on, you know, that was very practical and that you can immediately put to use if you wanted to. So this is an entire packet of just quick brain games, as we know that, you know, the teachers are working and doing such amazing work when it comes to diversifying their instruction as they need to with this hybrid platform. So that is the Staff Wellness Hub. Oh, let me actually go back and finish the bottom there. We had three specific areas of resources that we highlight, trauma-informed classroom practices. What is that, and how can you learn more about that? So we have resources here that you could see that really focus in on self-regulation relating to one another and reason. So the three key skills of a trauma-informed classroom. Additionally, we have resources for staff on adverse childhood experiences and grief sensitivity and what that might look like depending on the students in your room and the needs that they have. I also mentioned that it was a priority of the group to communicate resources and support structures to students and parents and our community. So in part, that is what we are doing tonight and what we hope to share with you. And I will walk you through the next part of the PowerPoint, which highlights exactly that. So we have a, as I mentioned in the previous slide, robust resource centers for students and families. And so I just want to take a moment to remind you again that the counseling sites, the counseling Google sites for distance learning have developmentally age-appropriate activities, articles, and resources for parents that we encourage everyone to check. We know that there's a lot of information coming out recently. But when you have an opportunity or you're specifically in need of something, we have organized these resources for you. So I'll highlight one of the sites to give you an example. I just clicked on the high school site. We have specific academic resources. And then, but because we're talking about wellness tonight, if you were to click on that, you can see some of our emergency resources quickly available and then resources for anxiety, grief, and loss, coping with disappointment. Everything is organized according to the topic in which you might be in need. So again, we encourage you to explore those counseling sites for more resources. As always, the counseling supports that we naturally provide in our roles and through the counseling program across the district are available to students as needed. And the team has been very busy this year, working with students, and whether it be in individual counseling, small group counseling, or classroom lessons, both in-person and virtually by school counselors and SACS, K through 12. We work for the coordination of care through community agencies, therapists, and referrals. We continue to do that work. That is more of our everyday work that is continuing throughout this year, of course, as well. But when it comes to sharing our resources, we published the first edition this year of our counseling newsletter. And so these newsletters are really a team effort, K through 12. The staff is sending me a ton of information. I can almost not even fit at all. And so we encourage you to look at the embedded links, the articles, and the activities, and we'll continue to highlight what is going on in the counseling program, but then also what might be helpful to you as a family at home. And so, for example, in the elementary school counseling, we have found that it's been helpful in our explanation of kids to talk to them about what they can control and that these are big problems we're living. But, you know, we do have some control over things. And so we have resources for parents if they need help in explaining that. Our middle school team produced two different videos for families. And our high school team has numerous resources to get them through this time. And our SACS provided weekly messages to our students, and I highlighted one of their messages there as well. Our last page always is a spotlight specifically on mental health matters, K through 12. And so whether it be additional resources for you as a family or upcoming programming. And so last week, we had our Teen Support Without Stigma in the community. That was a community program that we were looking to advertise as well. And we also hosted George Scott last week for our virtual event, Ms. Fox and I, called Preparing Children for a Different School World. And so if you were not able to join us that evening, we have posted that presentation on the Bernard's District website for parents. And I also linked the recording here. And so as this presentation is put on the website as well, you can find it there as well. We are working to provide regular communications from the counseling department about the supports that are available, whether it be in the community, parent programming, Zoom, you know, mental health and wellness supports, and also Google Sites. And so I'm highlighting, just as an example, one of our elementary counselors' Google Site. But this is something, again, for our community that you can always click on here and find some specific information that might be helpful to your children. And so explaining to them what resiliency is, learning how to compromise, and then various other resources that are quick prints or videos that you can watch with Read Alouds. And so we hope that this is helpful. And again, we just continuously work to update this so that it's relevant and useful for families. So I mentioned at the beginning of the presentation that we would also hear from our instructional coaching team. And so I've highlighted a lot of the work specific from the counseling department and from the SEL Task Force. We are thankful for everything that they do. And we are also thankful for the enormous support that the instructional coaches provide, really, to all staff. And so not only are they experts in pedagogy and instruction, but they do provide some amazing social, emotional wellness supports as well. And so with no further ado, I will turn it over to Mr. Syatt to hear from them.
Thank you very much, Ms. Smith. So this is a presentation that's actually a long time coming. I know we've talked about getting this opportunity. So really pleased that we get to share a little bit about the program with you tonight. And since I am a former social studies teacher, if I could take about 30 seconds and just give you a quick history of the program. This program, the Instructional Coaching Program, is something that I just want to give a little bit of credit here to David Stremsky. David Stremsky, about 10 years ago, went to a New Jersey Professional Development Council meeting and brought back this idea to my predecessor at the time. And we talked about the idea of having master practitioners work with staff in this confidential and collegial situation where they could work on practical, curricular, and differentiated support for staff members. And at the time, it sounded like a wacky idea. And we started to phase in this idea where we had staff members, again, very well-respected, seasoned staff members working with staff in, you know, on part-time schedules, where a teacher would have a period or two released. So they would teach maybe three periods, and then they'd have a couple of periods released where they would be working with staff during that time. And it was great, but not really the goal of the program, where they couldn't focus all their energy on the program. So we were really pleased with the board's support about a couple of years ago, where we were able to support two full-time instructional coaches. And really pleased to have two amazing coaches at the time, right now, with us, Kiara and Vicky. So if you could advance the slide. So, you know, we've heard a little bit about it already tonight, this idea of a partnership. And, you know, this is really something that I know the coaches will talk a lot about, because there is an element of trust between our instructional coaches and our staff. And it is in a supportive relationship. It's one that might focus on a pedagogical strategy. It might focus on a classroom management strategy. Or it might just focus on a professional conversation about a new practice. And so what's nice about the current setup is that Kiara tends to be more of our secondary-focused instructional coach because of her experience. And Vicky tends to be more of our elementary coach. But what's so great is both of them are able to flex and work with secondary or elementary, respectively, and have done an amazing job with that over the past year. And so when you look at all of the things that they work on, a lot of it begins with developing a trust with staff members, who may be reaching out for them for different ideas, to have conversations. But really, the key is that it's supposed to be a reflective and supporting relationship. So a lot of times, there are questions formulated between the conversation with the coach and the staff member. And out of those questions, oftentimes, some great ideas come about. And sometimes the coaches will go back and do some research. And sometimes the staff member will go back and do some research. And oftentimes, what comes out of it is usually improved practice. And it's also something that is another layer of support for our staff. So you have administration, of course, that works with staff. But this is a collegial relationship where Kiara and Vicky are able to work with our staff members in a non-evaluative sense. And so there's definitely an element of trust that's gained. And again, one more element of support. So the key is that it's not based on this idea of a deficit model. The coaches aren't going in, trying to look at weaknesses and finding what's wrong. But it's really trying to look at what staff are doing really, really well, and then building from that. And certainly, through those conversations... And certainly through those conversations, staff are reflecting on areas of growth, right? So through those collegial conversations that Vicky and Kiara are leading, and by the way, they were trained on, they are then are engaging in those conversations. And then hopefully continuing to refine practice. And really, what's our end game? Our end game is we want to improve student learning. That's really what it comes down to. Right? So in order to do that, we're having these professional conversations with our coaches and our staff. And so it is my pleasure to introduce Kiara, who I think is going to kick us off tonight.
Yes. Good evening. Thank you so much, Mr. Syatt. And thank you, everyone, for giving us the opportunity to present our program. As Mr. Syatt says, we've been waiting months to finally have this opportunity. So first, I would like to talk to you about who we really are. And I think it's very important, first and foremost, to really present ourselves as teachers. That's what we are. We are teachers working together with our colleagues, with the other teachers and other staff members. And that part, that element is so important for us because as Ms. Syatt has mentioned already, our entire program is really based on this idea of trust and this idea of collaboration and working together. And also what we do, we build this trust and collaboration because the most important thing is that we do this through conversation. You know, Vicky and I, over the years and over the training, we're definitely becoming masters at the, I call it the art of conversation. We're becoming masters of listening and especially questioning. What I love about our coaching program is that, exactly as Mr. Syatt mentioned before, what we do is we sit down with our colleagues, we listen to their needs, we listen especially to their strengths, their skills, their ability, and then we ask the right question. We ask the question that then help our colleagues and the staff and teachers to reflect, brainstorm, and together we come up with ideas, we come up with strategy, we come up with solution for problem solving. So really, this is what we are. We are the extra, the, the, the person that sparkles that starts the thinking in our colleagues. And this connects us then to what our goal is, which Vicky will present.
Thank you. So yes, our goal is really to guide and support the educators that we work with in transforming. And that's a really big word. It can be really a powerful word. But we want to transform their behaviors, their beliefs, and their being to gain the confidence that they need to uncover their full potential. And when we think about transformation, it's really important to focus on the fact that transformation is also about the journey, not just the destination. So it's not always about that end goal, but what we're doing to get there, which will bring us to the next slide, which is sort of like a little sneak peek into, into coaching. So on the right-hand side, in the white boxes, you can see there's sort of a definition of coaching. We work directly and indirectly with teachers, staff, and the administration to improve the effectiveness of classroom instruction and increase student learning performance and overall achievement. And we create a partnership with teachers to build upon trust and collaboration. But for me, it's about the process, which is sort of the word on the left-hand side. And I just wanted to take you through very quickly, you know, my favorite type of session. And we've seen this a lot lately. It starts with a Zoom meeting. And we're there to listen to our colleagues. We offer support. We use questioning. And through that questioning, we can uncover their strengths. And it's really phenomenal to see them break through their self-limits and get to the heart of things. And once they do that, you know, you see that joy again. And so all these words that I'm mentioning are all those words over on the left-hand side. It's the joy. It's the aha. And for me, it's the sigh of relief, like, okay, I got this. I can do this. And although it doesn't happen like that in every single meeting, those are definitely my favorite types. It's just, it's giving that teachers that power to, to continue on to find joy in education and and in turn, that leads to increasing student, student learning, the effectiveness of classroom instruction, and overall performance and achievement. So I really think that all those things on on the left-hand side sort of help us with, you know, the definition of coaching, exactly what we do. And for me, that's kind of coaching in a nutshell.
So as Vicky said, we want to present now exactly how all these coaching sessions and, you know, as Vicky said, that those, those thoughts and expression of relief that we got from many of our colleagues happened in the past few months. So we've been extremely active working since March to present time, including the summer, to make sure and working directly and indirectly with administrators to make sure that all our staff would be fully ready and working to their full potential during distance learning. So our work on during distance learning started in March, and it actually started those few days before we even closed. When we were sitting in the board office conference room with all the administrators and trying to come up with a plan in three days for what we thought was going to be the next 10 days, which then turned into months. So that was definitely an amazing experience for Vicky and I. But that's really what everything started doing distance learning that we really put our hands together, started working for and to with our colleagues. So the first step we took was to do lots of research because we realized that now that we were going to be home and all virtual, something that none of us had ever done before, we needed more than just Google Classroom or the Anchors tools that we were used to. So Vicky and I, together with many media specialists and other teachers, did lots of research and found all of the amazing online tools, platform resources that now all our staff K through 12 are using. And with that, we learned about it and we trained ourselves. We took lots of professional development training. And then what we did is we turned key that to the rest of the staff. And we offer lots of live tutorials throughout the month of, the months of April and May. And we did that together with, again, with the media specialists and we, other teachers that volunteered their time during their period off to also offer live tutorials. So throughout the day, we'd have probably up to sometimes five or six, or maybe even up to eight live tutorial where staff could just come into our Zoom and we would train and facilitate PD for different platforms such as Zoom, of course, Parlay, tools such as Padlet and so on. And I'm sure a lot of you might hear this might sound familiar because you hear from the students using these now as we speak. We also collaborated on way to build community because, you know, unfortunately, because we were all divided and behind the screen, it was hard to keep that community going. It was hard to keep that collaboration between colleagues and keep going with, with PLCs and collaborating. So we, again, we're almost the force that put everything together and make sure to create a community and that collaboration between, between staff members. We also maintain all the website for staff, students, and parents in order to access information. We worked closely with Mrs. Fox to create and maintain and manage the hubs back in, in the spring. In the summer, in the summer, we did a lot of work with the administrators and we sat in a lot of the committees with a lot of other staff members and teachers and colleagues that volunteered their time to make the best plan for the return to instruction. And also, we facilitated a lot of the staff colleges as Ms. Smith mentioned in her presentation. And we're going to talk a little more about that in detail further. Next slide, please. If we can have the next slide, please. Thank you. So these are some of the staff colleges that we have facilitated and offer over the summer. And we created these staff colleges and courses with the idea, we really sat down and thought, what are the priorities? What are some of the, the elements and the strategies that, that teachers are really going to need in order to start the distance learning in September? And the number one thing that we all agree, every task force community, SEL community, was the idea of community. Because we were all definitely a little nervous about how are we going to create that community when we are meeting the students on Zoom? Especially because when we went into distance learning in March, we already had the students for half of the year. Now, we were going to start in September with a whole new set of students that we didn't know. So we had to build the rapport, that community. We had to build a classroom structure that is really the basic to everything. It's the basic to learning. So the first staff college that we offered, and this was mandatory for all staff member, was on building community. This one was offered on the same platform as the one that you saw that Ms. Smith guided you through in Mining the Cave. So the teachers took a five-hour asynchronous course in which I created a lot of spaces for collaboration and discussion and sharing ideas. We developed strategies to create a sense of belonging so that the students would get there from the very first day. Another one that we offered was the assessment because that was another top priority. Now that we are in distance learning, we really had to rethink the way that we are assessing students. And we are trying and we're starting to really move towards skill-based assessment, project-based assessment. So we really have to work together with the teachers to brainstorm the best way to do that. And the last one, as Mrs. Smith presented, was the Mine in the Cave of Self to Build Resilience. And we built that in a way so that we also, hopefully, the, the teachers can test your strategies and use them with their students. Next. Oh, Vicky, you're unmuted.
Sorry about that. I'm going to talk a little bit about the Seesaw Project. So if you're not familiar with Seesaw, this is the new learning platform that we are using in pre-K through second grade. And the teachers were trained this summer. So the summer prep looked a little bit like, first, you know, I researched best practices for using Seesaw in the classroom. I do a lot of professional development myself. And then again, like Kiara said, I turnkey that to our teachers. So over the summer, we trained teachers on how to successfully use Seesaw and roll it out in their classrooms this fall. And they're doing a stellar job of that right now. And we developed a comprehensive teacher training manual filled with written photo and video tutorials so that the teachers could go back and reference them whenever they needed to, you know, throughout the school year. We developed a parent and student manual to help navigate the launch of Seesaw at home and provided parents with an evening training session that was hosted by the BTEA. And it had over 350 families in attendance, which was really fantastic. It was great to be able to speak to all of our families out there and help get them started using Seesaw at home because it really is something that is brand new. And especially with our little ones, it's, it's really difficult to find a platform that encompasses all that we do in the classroom with them every day. And I really love Seesaw for that. And I'm grateful to have the opportunity to work with parents on that as well. We provided parent office hours to help them get started and also teacher office hours as well. And then in September, we also provided some training in September, offering advanced Seesaw classes in the fall. And so we started out with an introduction to Seesaw. And now we are offering some staff college classes that look towards, okay, we know how to use Seesaw. Like, how can we further use everything that we're doing on Seesaw and advanced student learning? So those are being offered currently and throughout the fall. And I'm able to, I'm grateful to have the opportunity to really support the teachers and troubleshoot things with them regarding the instructional aspects of Seesaw, but the technical aspects as well. And I am able to keep my colleagues updated on all the new features that Seesaw pushes out. And I continue to do research and share with my colleagues how people all over the world are using Seesaw in their classroom, which is something that I am really loving right now. I'm gaining a ton of knowledge. I'm part of a lot of different groups that focus on Seesaw. And we're getting ideas from people all, all over the world in so many different countries that are using Seesaw successfully in their classrooms. And so I'm really excited that I was able to be a support system and, and help launch this, this new learning platform.
So we, as of now, we just presented it to you, what we did during the past few months during distance learning, so from March until present. But of course, our work has been, as Mr. Syatt introduced before, for the past 10 years, we've had this great program. And especially during the last year and a half that we have the opportunity to be full-time, we have really taken upon many, many roles as instructional coaches. So we want to just guide you through some of the different roles that we have in the district with our colleagues in our building, even before the distance learning. And hopefully that we can go back to it even more when we go back to normal. So first, we definitely see ourselves as school leader. And what we mean by school leader is by a role of somebody that can really make a change. So we really take our time through, we have the opportunity to have those conversations with the teachers. And through those conversations, we really get to know the teachers' need and eventually really indirectly the students' need. So as leaders, we have a chance then to take that and hopefully make changes. We are facilitators because as we have said before and presented, we are very involved into the professional development aspect and the whole professional development program for the district. So we do facilitate many staff college courses, but we also have and play an active role into the planning of all the in-services during the year. So last year, both Vicky and I were very involved in the planning of all the in-services for the staff. And in order to do all that, we're learners, we're constant learners. And I think that's probably one of our favorite roles, Vicky. You would probably agree. We're constantly reading about new strategies, about learning about new, new, new online tools, platforms, resources. And we're learners so that then we can help the teachers even more.
We find ourselves to be curriculum and instructional specialists. So we are creating, developing, and collaborating on lessons and lesson plans to help engage students. We are providing structure for differentiated instruction. And we're researching new technology to supplement and enhance the curriculum. As Kiara said, we are catalysts for change. We get so much feedback from teachers and from students. And we can give that feedback a voice. We take that feedback to the administrators and bring certain things to their attention. And then they can make changes. And those changes can then improve morale and build community and create the best experience possible for staff and students. And we are classroom supporters. And we can co-teach a lesson. We can model instruction. And both of those we can do in person or virtually now. We can just be an extra set of hands in, in the classroom. You know, when someone is trying something new and they just, they just need a little bit of extra support, we can be substitute teachers in a classroom for a period or for an hour so that teachers can go observe their colleagues. And that's really important that we're constantly learning from each other. And we can just be a sounding board for ideas. Because from, you know, ideas are the basis for growth and change and development. And so we, we can just be that sounding board and listen and, and take and really use those questioning techniques that we talked about to help them create those ideas and curate them and build them from the ground up.
And we are also resource providers. And I know I've spoken already about all the resources that we found, but within, once we found those resources, also, one of the things that we've been working on is to organize all those resources for us, for our colleagues and the staff, and make sure that they're all easy to access and easy to also find the training for it. We also select resources based on different subjects, different student needs. And we provide the structure and templates to, for instruction for, for the teachers. Also, another thing that we've been doing when it comes to resource lately, especially since school started, we have offered help to our colleagues to test the resources that, that they want to try. So Vicky and I have created many at this point, testing Google Classroom. And we have all kinds of tests, different accounts for all of the different online resources. So we tell the teachers, if you want to try something with us before you actually go and try with the students and make sure that it works, that's something that we have been also doing very actively with resources. We are mentors. And this is really where the whole idea of support it comes in. And I think that this is our SEL role. We support teachers by being that listening ear that I, that I mentioned before. We also create a safe space. Many teachers, especially now during this very difficult time and unprecedented time, we are looking for somebody to speak to and somebody that it's, you know, they consider us at the same levels because we are teachers just like them. So we are mentors that are there to listen, to give a listening ear, and to really offer support. And I think the most important thing is Vicky and I always try as mentor to then And I think the most important thing is Vicky and I always try as mentor to then bring that positivity back into our colleagues. And then lastly, we're data coaches. One of the things that we do a lot is we sit down with the, with the, with our colleagues, with the staff, and we look a lot at data, especially when it comes to formative and soundative assessments. So a lot of teachers reach out to us to look at, for example, results or feedback from, from an assessment that might, they might have given or project they might have given. And we help them analyze the data to then create strategies and create a plan to help them and the students improve. Next slide.
This is our last slide for you. These are some testimonials that we've received from our colleagues. If you read through them, you'll see a common theme. A lot of them are based on the foundation of support and how support comes in many different ways. And since this presentation will be shared with the community, please feel free to read them at your leisure. Kiara and I really want to thank you tonight for having us and we truly value take pride and find joy in our work. And we're grateful for the opportunity to share that with you. We look forward to continuing to support our colleagues through the instructional coaching program. Thank you so much. Mr. Markarian?
Thank you all very much, Stephanie, Kiara, Vicky and Sean. I really appreciate you guys putting that together. It's very informative. And at this point, if any board members have any questions for our speakers, now would be a good time.
Mr. Samson?
Hi, thank you very much for that presentation. That was really informative and I'm really glad that we have this position in the district. I think it's really a great resource for us. My question is, how do you get direction? Like, you know, you talked about how you're helping teachers initiate transformational change within the classroom. So where do you get that information from to talk about like what's next, right? That was your, kind of the thing you're focusing on, what's next? So where do you get that information from?
I can take that one if that's okay. I think it comes from them, you know, it's really about what, what they want to do, what, where they want to, where they want to go next. It's everything that we do in coaching is completely confidential and we're never told by administrators, you know, you need to meet with so and so. It really comes directly from the teachers. And it's what about, it's what, it's about what they want to do next in their classroom or something new that they want to try. Or an improvement that they, they, they feel like they need to see or to make in their classroom. Or they're looking to reach a specific goal of a student and they, you know, are looking for more strategies to support them in doing that.
And I would like to add to that also that many times what we also do is, as Vicky said, we take from the teachers and from the conversation, from those conversations that we have is where we really gather our data to see what are the needs. And you know, and a lot of times we realize that there's needs in a certain building might have some needs in another building does. Or there's a certain, a lot of times, for example, I work a lot with groups of teachers. For example, I work a lot with PLC groups and and teachers by subject. And I realize that sometimes it's even department has certain needs that are different from others. So then I take those needs. And a lot of times, always keeping a confidentiality, we do then work with the supervisors or with the director of curriculum, with Ms. Fox, with Mr. Said. And we present those needs and we make a plan. And many times those needs is also what has guided us to make certain decisions during in-service, during PD and during staff college offerings.
Then in terms of the literal answer to your question, in terms of where they take direction from, and we have monthly meetings, the coaches, myself, so they report directly to me. But what we try to do is at these meetings, we look at quality professional development resources for them. So there's a professional coaching network out there. And so, you know, Kiara had recently made some connections pre-COVID. And so we were talking about doing some site visits actually in some model instructional programs around the state. That was our, that was going to be our next goal. And so hopefully we're going to get that that back on track to create some spaces actually for some coaching sessions to take place in the district. But there are some professional organizations that they've obtained training from and they'll continue to do that. That's kind of where they get their PD from, these, these national training networks.
Thank you. Great program. Keep it up.
Anyone else question? Okay, I don't see any hands. I just like to say thank you to all of our speakers and to our two instructional coaches. You know, I've been around the district a long time and I know what an amazing program that we have here. And we're grateful to have you both and especially now in this more challenging time. I, you're invaluable and we're really fortunate that our district is able to have such experts here to support our staff.
Thank you so much.
And just thank you for being here and taking the time to share with us. Seeing no more questions from board members, I'm gonna go on to the next item, Mr. Markarian. That's the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mrs. Gray. So just a couple of items there. Not, not even necessarily voting, voting items on the agenda per se, but I wanted to make sure we went on the record for a couple of things since the first in particular is very new. For Election Day, November 3rd of 2020, this coming month, the next month, rather, we are, we're doing something a little different. We are not allowed to have in-person instruction on that date. However, we are allowed to count the day among our 180 days as a virtual only day for all of our students. I believe I mentioned this at another board meeting, if not two, but I just want to kind of keep putting it out there. We did update the school district calendar to reflect the fact that that is a day of school. However, it is completely virtual. Now, we're not allowed to have any students getting instruction in our buildings that day. The other thing I wanted to mention was that we, in addition to certifying the number of graduates, we need to report to the board how students achieved their graduation assessment in a few different categories. So I'm reporting that out under the second item under superintendent's report. You can see those, the number of students passing a substitute competency test, the portfolio appeals process, and those students that met the assessment requirement through their IEP. Finally, we also need to share with you the number of 12th grade students who were denied graduation and that was zero. So those are two informational items I wanted to get officially reported to the Board of Education. I also wanted to share in general, just a few items that have come up as questions in the, in the last few weeks, some recent items that various folks have either mentioned or emailed about. So the first is related to switching from a virtual model of instruction to our blended learning program. I'm sure everyone's very familiar at this point in time that our students are enrolled in one of those two models. They are either a hundred percent virtual only student or they are coming to school for some time in the blended learning program where they have some in-person instruction and some virtual instruction. There are some exceptions here and there for some of our special needs programs for some of our ELL students, but those are generally the two programs that we're running right now. And some folks have asked about switching from one program to the other. It certainly creates some challenges, but there is a mechanism to do so by communicating with the school building principal. Parents can request to switch from one program to the other. As we've talked a little bit about in the past, switching from the in-person model to the virtual model is a little bit easier to accommodate because we are not managing the social distancing issue when the students are virtual. Obviously, when the students come into the school buildings and we are trying to manage the in-person class sizes to facilitate social distancing, it's a little bit more of a challenge. So that causes us to ask parents to follow a schedule if in fact they want to move from the virtual program to the blended learning program. And what we're asking is that parents give us a three-week notice to make that switch from virtual to blended. At the 612 level, that three-week notice needs to come three weeks prior to the start of the marking period. So the date that would be three weeks prior to the start of the second marking period is October 22nd. So I will put this out in writing as well this week. I'm sure Mr. or Dr. Lasvik would be happy to reiterate the same message. But for parents who are looking to have their virtual student move to the blended learning program for the start of the second marking period, they need to notice the principal by October 22nd. And again, that is for the middle school and the high school that are running on marking periods. So I will ask both Dr. Lasvik and Mrs. Hudok to reinforce that message for parents in their communications. Now, for our elementary students, we are asking that if you wish to move from virtual to blended, that you give us notice timed with the beginning of the second trimester, since our elementary schools are on a trimester model in terms of their reporting schedule. And so the date that is three weeks prior to the start of the second trimester is November 13. And again, I will ask the principals to reinforce that message in their communications going forward. So again, it's a three-week notice prior to the start of the second marking period for the middle school and the high school and a three-week notice prior to the start of the second trimester for our elementary schools. Another informational item that has been the subject of quite a bit of questions I tried to communicate about actually in the last two SOS Express messages. And that message was related to our daily forms. We have a couple of forms that are frequently used depending on whether the student is a blended learning student or a hundred percent virtual student. And those two forms that I've shared about recently in SOS Express's, in fact, I believe it was the last two messages, are the daily attendance form and the daily, daily COVID-19 screening form. So for our student absence reporting, right, any student, any student, whether they're in the blended learning model or the hundred percent virtual learning model, if they're not going to be participating in school, regardless of whether their school is happening at home that day or whether that school schooling is going to be in person in one of our school facilities, we need the parents to complete the student absence reporting form. And this is a challenging area for us because we do have a lot of movement happening with our students. We have students that are switching between being at home or being in person on the A-Day, B-Day cohort model. We have families that are asking to move from one modality to the other. So we're really putting a lot of energy in, in trying to keep everybody accountable for their learning. Obviously, we want the students to be engaged in their learning. We're trying to keep everyone accountable for that. And we're also trying to, of course, be safe and keep track of the students that we are responsible for keeping track of. So we do need parents to help us with that. If your child is not going to be participating at all for the day in their blended learning model or the hundred percent virtual learning model, please do submit the student absence reporting form. The other issue in responding to that form is there's a little text box right in the form. It's a required text box. In order to submit the form, you need to provide the reason for the absence. And this is so the absences can be cataloged correctly and also so that the school nurses know what's going on. In the past, our school nurses would receive phone calls, they'd receive emails explaining why a student is absent, why a student is absent. We are trying to provide one form in a central location to make it easier for the nurses to process attendance. So we are asking folks to use that text box that's right in the absence reporting form to explain the reason for the absence, which is why it is a required item when submitting that form. We did add an option to the student absence reporting form that I wrote to parents about on September 30th. And that additional option is just in the case of our blended learning model students whereby we added a code to the student absence reporting form such that if a blended learning model student just wasn't quite feeling great, maybe they had some mild symptoms, they, they wanted to take the day to see how they were feeling, but they were feeling well enough to do schoolwork and and wanted to be able to work remotely, there is a option for that on the student absence reporting form where parents can indicate that the child will not be coming to school as scheduled for an in-person day, but they will be participating from home. So we're trying to facilitate that wherever students are feeling well enough that they may be able to participate. They can do so by logging into the various calls and Zoom classes that the students have. And the teachers can take attendance and they can earn credit by coming to all of their classes remotely. Of course, we do have to track the students. That's what the daily attendance code is for. So we know whether or not a child is supposed to be in the building or not. So it's still really important for parents to process that student absence reporting form because we really need to keep track of the whereabouts of students if they are going to be in school on the date that they're scheduled to be in school or not. And also so that we are aware of whether or not a child is going to be participating in the school day at all, regardless of whether they're virtual or in person. If you're not going to be participating at all, you do have to file that student absence reporting form. If you're not going to be coming to school on a day that you were supposed to come to school in person as a blended learning model student, you also need to submit that student absence reporting form. I know it's very wordy and I'm going on and on about it, but it is a huge task that's going on on a daily basis to try to keep track of the whereabouts of our students. It's a big responsibility for us in all the schools to be accountable for our, for our students and we really need, we really need people to help out with that. So I appreciate you enduring my diatribe on this issue, but it's really important. Going along with that is the daily COVID-19 screening form. We, many parents have started to do this just in the last week or so as we are bringing in the A and the B-Day cohort students now on their designated cohort days. And any student that is reporting for in-person learning needs to complete the daily COVID-19 screening form. You do that through Genesis. Please do that at least 30 minutes before the start of the school day. And that really has to be done regardless of whether or not the child is coming to school. If they're scheduled to come to school in person and that's going to be our blended learning model students, on any day they are scheduled to come to school in person, they need to submit the daily COVID-19 screening form, even if ultimately they don't come to school that day because that form allows again, the nurses to collect necessary information where they may need to follow up with parents as appropriate. The other situation where students would complete the daily COVID-19 screening form is if they are engaged in some type of after-school activity or athletic program. If you're coming to school for that reason, you also complete the daily COVID-19 screening form. But in that case, you carry it as a piece of paper and you take it to your activity advisor or you take it to your coaches for your activity. And that's simply to facilitate the ease of processing of those activity advisors and those coaches because they just can't on the spot be getting into Genesis and trying to sort out which kids have completed the forms and which, which kids haven't. So we do ask that in those cases, folks bring the daily COVID-19 screening form right in hand as a paper copy. We apologize. We know that on the, on the first couple of days of school and we had a lot of activity going on in Genesis as parents were submitting the, the screening forms and the students were logging into Genesis. It did seem to crash the system, if you will. Apparently, it, it was apparently related to the volume. Apparently, it was apparently related to the volume happening right in that early morning hour between, say, seven thirty-ish, seven o'clock to maybe eight, eight thirty in that range. It caused some problems. We seemed to get that resolved on Friday and it did not happen today. So I think we are doing well now in getting that screening form working properly with Genesis. But as I mentioned on Friday, you never know when the technology is going to let you down. So if you, as a parent, could print some of those daily COVID nineteen screening forms, have a couple of hard copies at the house in the event that you're trying to do the screening form through Genesis and you're not able to log in, you can do that form by paper and have the child take it to school where it would be accepted when they go to enter the building. So again, apologies for the lengthy discussion about these two forms, but they're really important in helping us to keep things safe for the students and to keep them accountable for where they are. So thank you for that. Another question that's come up several times in the last month or so really has been related to our schedule and our A cohort and our B cohort and the fact that we have the students divided into these two cohorts and they're not all coming to school at the same time. They're not in school together as one cohort, they're split in half. And obviously, as we've discussed several times, the reason for that is that we are tasked with creating social distancing in our school buildings. And we cannot create any opportunity at social distancing if all the students in a particular building are coming at the same time. So they are divided into these two cohorts. That obviously greatly reduces class size because each cohort is coming on its designated days and they're not all together. So by dividing them up, we do lower class size and we are able to be reasonably successful in creating social distance in the classroom. And what we've been asked about is, well, when could we get rid of that? And when could we bring all the students back together and have them for the full school day? So we've taken a look at that issue and it really comes down to our plan. We have a return to instruction plan that is part of our Board of Ed policy and that return to instruction plan has been approved by our Executive County Superintendent for Somerset County, and it's been approved with the cohort model to lower the class size by only bringing in one group of students at a time, either the A cohort or the B cohort. So I did have a conversation with the Executive County Superintendent, Mr. Jenks, about, you know, when might he consider a different approval, a plan that would bring all the students in at the same time? When, when might that be something that he would consider approving? And basically, at this point in time, he would not consider a plan that did that because it would then remove the social distancing that the plan was approved for to begin with. And the reason that the plan was approved as a plan that provided for social distancing was because that was what the marching orders were through the guidance document that the NJ DOE produced called The Road Back. And our Executive County Superintendent in Somerset County is approving plans that meet that expectation of social distancing. And at this point in time, until that guidance document changes, I don't see us getting approval from him to bring all the students back together. Last thing I wanted to mention was with respect to our Board of Education meetings, there's been some ongoing conversation among the public, some questions about when might we do Board of Education meetings in person again. Obviously, we're having our students come back in person. We would like to be able to have the opportunity to consider ways that we might be able to do Board of Education meetings in person. And we've got a couple of issues that we're working through. One is, what is the maximum number of people that we would be allowed to have at a board meeting? It appears to be twenty-five persons right now. We are looking to get some clarification on that issue. And the second thing is a local finance notice that was just published last week, Local Finance Notice twenty twenty dash twenty-one is adding another wrinkle in terms of how virtual meetings get conducted. So we've got a couple of question marks that we need to work our way through in order to understand what our options really are on the subject of being able to do Board of Education meetings in person and whether or not it's appropriate and reasonable to do so. So I have a little more legwork to do with the Board Attorney as well as probably the Executive County Superintendent, trying to get some answers on this new local finance notice and some interpretation on how many persons are allowed to be at a Board of Education meeting in person at the same time. So we'll be chasing those things down and hopefully be able to come back to the Board with some more information by the time we get to the next board meeting in a couple of weeks. So thank you for your attention. That's all I have by way of superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Markarian. With that, our next item is public comment, comment, pardon me, on agenda items. And I'd just like to remind anyone who has not sent a comment in, who may be, please include your first and last name and your address. And if you have sent a comment in that does not include those three items, please send it in again with those items included, first and last name and address. And with that, Ms. Fox?
Oh, I apologize, Ms. Fox. I think that we wanted to reiterate from what we've done for the last several weeks or several meetings, I should say, and we'll tap the public comment on agenda items at forty-five minutes if it goes that long, and then we'll carry on in non-agenda items if needed. Thank you.
Okay, the first comment is from Yolanda Scribner, Six Lynn Croft Drive. Dear BOE members, we are a group of families with elementary school children that would like to voice our support of our hardworking teachers and express our desire for better virtual learning. Consistent schedule and clearly documented weekly agenda. We like that the teacher-led class meetings use the same Zoom link. Emphasizing face time during virtual learning while allowing for flexible work submissions has allowed our children to learn at their own pace. Having recorded and written instructions have been useful reminders for our children to stay on task while working independently. We would like to ask the school to enable the teachers time to provide more weekly feedback to parents. Parents want to support our children, but we need personalized feedback on how we can help them. We would also like to have more one-on-one or small group meetings with individualized support and more offline enrichment during the afternoons, like reading for thirty minutes a day, spelling and sight word activities. The flexibility of asynchronous learning did work for some families last year, and we understand the need to have asynchronous learning this year. Please post the asynchronous assignments in the morning or at the beginning of the week to allow families to create a workable schedule. Thank you for allowing virtual attendance to count when hybrid elementary students can't attend in-person sessions. Sniffles and runny noses are very difficult to wipe while wearing a face mask. It was also pointed out that collectively, K to five students in our district spend approximately thirty-five percent of their time in school buildings and sixty-five percent of their time remote. Please focus more resources on better virtual learning. It has only been a few weeks and we do know everyone is trying their hardest. Things feel smoother this trimester. We can see that the teachers are working very hard to engage and encourage our children and it is appreciated. It has been important to many of us to know we can keep our families safe at home. We greatly appreciate the hard work the board, the schools, staff, and particularly the teachers have been doing. Sincerely, Yolanda Scribner and other contributors. The next comment is from Nicole Riley from Thirty-Five Tall Timber Lane. This is a copy of an email that was sent on nine twenty-eight to Mr. Markarian as well as the BOE that did not get a response. I am sure you all receive many emails, but parent emails should not be ignored. We deserve a response. Mr. Markarian and members of the board, I hope this message finds you well. I am deeply disappointed in your decision to remove live Zoom instruction to the cohorts that are home at CHS. This is a big disruption to the students in a time when things are constantly changing. The lack of live instruction brings us right back to the format that we had last spring and we all know that that was unacceptable. Students at this age cannot and should not be expected to watch videos all day and complete work on their own. I have a second grader and a fifth grader at CHS and they are both very upset. I can state for a fact that this will bring more tears, frustration, and an aversion to school from a second grader. Mr. Markarian, is this really the best plan our district can come up with? Students will truly only be learning two half-days per week. With this plan, our district will certainly lose its ranking because elementary-age students are sure to fall behind. This is already, this is a huge setback in an already broken plan. Both teachers, parents, and students deserve more. Thank you. Barbara Geary, Sixty-Six Dryden Road. I noticed that the calendar has been adjusted so the A and B cohort days in school are equal after my email on Friday to Mr. Markarian, but November remains the same with cohort A in school ten days and cohort B in school five days. This is an extreme differential in one month. Can this be adjusted? We all know that classroom days in November are different from abbreviated days before holidays or June classroom days. Live streaming was removed from the hybrid students on their home days. The students were able to watch the mini lesson and then go offline to work independently and the teacher was able to focus on the students in the classroom. Please explain why this changed and please do not say it is bandwidth-related. That should have been part of preparing the school buildings for opening. This puts the hybrid students at a disadvantage to the virtual students who have access to their teacher five times a week for lessons. Please make this an option for the hybrid students. I am shocked it changed after the K-two students started school. On Wednesdays, hybrid students at the elementary level only see their teacher for morning check-in since there is professional development district-wide every Wednesday. I watched the presentation, Preparing Children for a Different World, with George Scott last week. Mr. Scott said, quote, "Fortunately, we have the mechanism to stay connected a bit, but a technological connection does not do the same thing for human beings that a person-in-person connection does." He also said, "Because one of the things that we find with electronics, with electronics, our kids get disrupted sleep and they develop brain fog. With an expert opinion on file, can the BOE put together a task force to plan for a one-hundred percent back-in-school plan versus the hybrid model? Please reach out to the community to get members whose input from their professional backgrounds could be invaluable. I believe the BT Connect Communication Council was utilized in the summer, but won't it be prudent to form a task force whose expertise can be utilized now? To the Board of Ed members, thank you for your time you have dedicated to the district. I can only imagine the number of emails that have been received to the group email within the last few months. This is the only way for us to contact you. I have never received one response to any email sent to this address, including pre-COVID times. As a parent, how would you respond if every concern or question you had was never acknowledged?" Kirk DuGaye, Kirk DuGaye, Ten Pitney Court. The families that feel they are at risk from the virus are already doing the one-hundred percent virtual office option. The rest of us want school back normally five days a week. In addition, some people are now switching to the virtual option now, not because of safety concerns, but specifically because of your mask mandate. Masks should be optional and at the very least, the children should be able to remove their masks while sitting at their desks, similar to how diners remove their masks while sitting at a restaurant. It is a fact that wearing masks causes emotional distress to some children, especially the younger ones. Read the mission statement and philosophy on the Board of Education's website. It states that education is the first priority and that social and emotional development are essential to achieving that goal. Mandatory mask-wearing does not fit in with these goals and goes beyond your authority. Make them optional, especially for the elementary schools. Liz Pallillo, Fifty Haas Road. Are there district efforts or task forces focused on getting our children back to school for in-person instruction more than currently implemented? Also, with the elementary schools, the ability for teachers to Zoom with cohorts on their home days in order to give introductory lessons was taken away, CHS, or never established. I sent an email to Mr. Markarian and did not receive a response. This is a significant step backwards. Our youngest children are left to fend for themselves when their cohort is not in person. What are the plans to enhance the current learning plan in the elementary schools for hybrid students? Karen O'Connor, Eleven Forbes Court. Good evening. I hope your day went well. My name is Karen O'Connor and I am a junior at Ridge High School. I am the president of the Ridge Business Club as well as the vice president of the Ridge Guitar Club. I'm writing this email to ask about Ridge Clubs. Clubs were hit especially hard when Ridge closed for in-person schooling from March until last week, while teachers were able to virtually meet with students in the spring. Clubs were not allowed to operate for a while, even virtually. Now with the start of the new school year, again, we are not able to meet even on a one-hundred percent virtual basis. My business club advisor, Ms. Heidi Fox, notified me on Wednesday, September thirtieth, that clubs are not allowed to meet until the Board of Education approves their operation. This change came after the business club already successfully met virtually several times since the beginning of September. Many Ridge students participate in clubs and they greatly benefit from them. So taking away something else from us during this time makes no sense to me or the more than sixty business club members. What will it take for clubs to be approved to meet and when will it happen? We understand that student and faculty advisor safety is most important. We have already shown that we can make this work virtually. If there is a concern about meeting in person, please let us meet virtually until in-person meetings are approved. On a very happy note, today was my first day back in physical school and it felt good. I appreciate your hard work in safely reopening our schools. Ridge did a fantastic job of ensuring our safety and providing a great experience. Best. Armin and Cynthia Kirchner, Sixteen Lenape Court. Dear Mr. Markarian, below is a copy of an email I sent you on September twenty-seventh upon learning that our seven-year-old would no longer receive live Zoom lessons on her at-home days. Along with answering this question, can you kindly explain why parents are not getting any response to emails questions? Dear Mr. Markarian, I was just made aware of your decision to no longer provide live Zoom sessions to the cohort students on their home days. Can you please clarify your reasoning behind this decision? I have a second grader whose schedule has already changed several times since the start of the school year. I can't imagine how difficult it will be for my seven-year-old to learn with zero instruction. I would appreciate a response to help me understand how this is helping my children. Since I've written this email, I have learned that other schools were not doing live Zoom lessons. It seems to me that instead of stopping teachers who are doing them and having success, perhaps encourage more teachers to do so. Can we raise the bar and not lower it? Thank you. Christopher Askowitz, Ten Gultra Drive. Dear all, in regards to Ms. Elaine D'Addario's decision to not accept the position for Board of Education, I agree that the position should not go unfilled after the November election. Therefore, I respectfully submit my name as a write-in candidate for the role. My children may begin in the future, in the school district in the coming future, and as Ms. D'Addario says, this is an opportunity to make a lasting difference to their future and my community. If you would like, please write in my name on the November ballot. Sincerely, Christopher Asakowitz. Terry Laird, Twenty Lurline Drive. Thank you for all you are doing in a difficult situation. With the ability to substitute a fully virtual day for Election Day when school buildings in the state were told to be closed, I am thankful this has been done to not mess up the schedule. I have heard of some state regulations making it difficult to have virtual days in place of a snow day, but I don't understand how the Election Day substitution can be done but not snow days. If the state regulations are indeed the issue, I would hope that at some point in the near future, the state can be petitioned to update those regulations given all that has been learned during the virtual learning that every district is now mandated to allow and is being used by many. I understand that this may not be a top priority at this moment as we are only into the first few days of hybrid learning, but please consider this as a viable option or help the state make it a viable option in the not-too-distant future. Thank you. Hello, Ashok Kasarla, Thirty-four Liberty Ridge Road. This is regarding middle school labs. Are there any plans for the virtual students' labs program? Thank you for all the hard work you put together for an unusual time. Stacy Irvine. There's no Andrews, but she's given it in the past. Are we okay with that? Should I skip it and have her send it in? Sorry.
Skip it for now, Ms. Fox. She'll probably email back in.
Okay, thank you. Elizabeth Savona, Eleven Archgate Road. Good evening, Mr. Markarian and board members. Thank you for your efforts to open the schools for the hybrid instruction. Our kids have had good experiences over the past few days at Ridge, WHAMs, and LCS and are happy to be back at school in person. My question is specifically regarding the elementary students. When the students aren't home on their cohort's virtual days... what is the rationale for the lack of any live instruction? As I understand it, other than a morning meeting and a check-in at 2:35 with the teacher, the entire day of learning is done independently. How are elementary kids, aged kids, expected to independently learn writing, reading, and math in a virtual environment and complete their required assignments? How is two to three days a week of this considered sufficient instruction for them to meet the grade requirements? I'm very concerned about the kids' abilities to manage this without significant parental involvement or outside tutoring. Can you consider ways that both cohorts can receive instruction every day? It seems to work for WHAMs and Ridge, so is this something that can be implemented for elementary schools? Additionally, is there a plan in place to return to five days a week in-person instruction? If not, why not? What goals need to be met to be able to fully open? Thank you for your time. Heather Watson Kramer, 84 Liberty Corner Road. Dear Mr. Markarian and Board of Education members, Before I get to my comment tonight, in honor of World Teacher Day, I would like to thank every single Berners-Tanisha teacher for all of their amazing work. I know that you are all working extremely hard at the moment, and I want you to know that my family and I appreciate everything that you are doing to continue to educate our children during these crazy times. I would like to bring a topic that has come up on several local Facebook pages to the BOE and schools' attention, and that is academic integrity. I know cheating has been an issue in schools across the world since the dawn of time, and that modern technology has certainly made it a lot easier. But our current school setup with some students at school and some students at home has made this an even bigger issue. I am hearing rumors that some students are choosing to go 100% virtual, as it is easier to cheat. I have also heard of some students having to take a test in-person while the other cohort is taking it at home. I'm not sure what the answer is, but I want to make sure that my children and all other students are not at a disadvantage because they are on the hybrid model. Finally, thank you so much for bringing the ACT to Ridge High School this October. I realize that wasn't an easy task, but it has truly been a huge stress relief to our seniors. Sincerely. Danielle Ross, 5 Tysley Street. I would first like to say that the teachers are doing an amazing job considering where we were last year. While remote learning is not optimal for the month of September, the full-time live instruction kept the children engaged in learning. So can you please comment on why in the hybrid learning model, the teachers are not live-streaming and teaching the at-home cohort from the classroom? While I can only comment on the grade-school level with the start of in-school learning, I feel like we have taken a step backwards with the at-home days and independent learning. For the lower grades, the parents are now having to step in and teach material that we are not familiar with and will not be covered again when the children go back for their in-school day, putting them at a disadvantage, not to mention taking time away from parents who are trying to work. Why would the completely remote kids be receiving full-time live instruction and the hybrid children are not? This seems like more work for the hybrid teachers having to come up with a live and remote lesson plan each day. I think this situation also promotes parents sending their children into school when they could possibly be sick to avoid the independent work that is problematic. My understanding is Cedar Hill was using the live teaching for all students in the hybrid model, but that it was suspended due to technical issues. Can you explain? From what I understand, it was a success. We learned from last year that independent learning doesn't work. With no timeline for a full return to school, we need to get as close to that as possible, as enough time was lost last year. I think if you were to survey parents and teachers on this topic, you would find overwhelming support. Elizabeth Vinhal, 22 Elizabeth Street. Will the virtual students' teacher remain the same throughout the year regardless of how many kids switch to hybrid and the need for more teachers in school? Pam Malari, 79 Fieldstone Drive. I submitted this comment for the previous meeting, but I have not seen any response to it. Have there been any recent analysis of the data security of the systems that we are relying on for distance learning? Google Classroom, Zoom, and the databases where our students' data is being stored? Have there been any data security concerns or breaches in the last two years involving students' data in our district? We know that the town's computer network was breached this summer. With all logins relying on student IDs, what effort is being made to keep secure the student IDs of each student? Are there unique passwords that the students' parents can be used as passwords instead of student IDs? Good evening. My address was listed on my first email, but wait, I still don't. Let me look for a second. I do not see it. Sorry, I don't see it. That's the last comment. With address. Thank you.
Is it, is it possible that it's getting cut off? I feel like one of our comments last time we had. Does anyone have, is there a name, Kristin?
Stacy Irvine.
Okay, so then perhaps what we could do is agree that we are familiar with her and that we know she lives in the district, and then perhaps she could send an email that includes her address with the same content. Stacy, if you're listening, if that's amenable, I think we're gonna just read it into the record. Are you okay with that?
You can't see the thumbs up if it's on speaker view, but I think.
Oh, okay. So I'm seeing lots of thumbs ups.
Okay. New Jersey's rate of transmission is currently 1.27, which is higher than it was back in April during the peak hospital census. In addition, 11 New Jersey schools now have confirmed COVID-19 outbreaks, all of which have been proven to be from transmission in school. Are you taking additional steps beyond the steps mentioned in prior meetings to prevent an outbreak in our school district? Also, we are now one month from the end of the first marking period. Will parents need to make a formal request to remain in their current virtual or hybrid status for marking period two, or will we automatically remain in our current selection? And that was the final comment.
Thank you, Ms. Fox. We appreciate your dedication to this task. Mr. Markarian, is there anything you'd like to address at this time?
Sure. So one question came up about time for teachers to have contact with parents. I think that's a really interesting challenge that we have right now with the teacher's time already being divided and stretched really thin. It's certainly something that we could talk about to see if there might be a way to achieve that. I think it's a valid point, and obviously, you know, communication with families is desirable. It's, they're stretched now more than ever. It's probably harder than ever to make that contact happen, but it doesn't mean we can't talk about some ways to try to do it. There were several questions about Cedar Hill School live instruction, the difference between live instruction for blended learning students, live instruction for virtual learning students. I'm gonna ask Ms. Fox to think about that one, and we'll come back to it. A/B cohort days, there was a question about the balance in various months of the year. There should be a balance to the A and B cohort days for in-person instruction over the course of the whole year. We are really looking to try to be consistent with Mondays and Tuesdays being A-days and Thursdays and Fridays being B-days for the sake of not making people just lose their minds trying to keep track of which days are A-days and which days are B-days. And it's really relevant at the elementary level on Wednesdays, because sometimes a Wednesday is an A-day and sometimes a Wednesday is a B-day just for the elementary students. The 612 students, Wednesdays don't, it's not an issue for 612 students on Wednesdays because they're all virtual. So what we tried to do there was use Wednesdays as the swing days, and yes, that does mean that some months favor A-days over B-days, but our goal was to work it out using the Wednesdays to balance things out, because people expect that on Wednesdays, they have to look and think, is it an A Wednesday or is it a B Wednesday? So that was the rationale for that, and we are balanced in terms of the total number of days being A and B by the time we get to graduation in June. I tried to address the issue of everyone coming 100% back in to school in my comments on Superintendent's report. I certainly understand the desire to see that happen. You know, I've talked about this from the perspective of, you know, trying to get started in what we're currently doing on the A cohort and the B cohort, having some history behind that, seeing good health and wellness among the staff and students. But in my conversation with the county superintendent, it goes even beyond that. It's simply not entirely up to me to say, okay, now we're gonna switch. It's gonna be a decision that involves a return-to-instruction plan that gets amended. We had a plan. It was approved. We're implementing it. If we want to amend that plan, it also needs to get approved, and that approval is being done in light of the current guidance document, The Road Back, which really puts a high priority on social distancing. So until that document changes, I don't see the county superintendent wanting to approve a plan in Somerset County that doesn't offer social distancing. There was a question about masks, that they should be optional and that masks are driving kids out of schools. Again, that's not a local decision. Masks are required to be worn by all students and staff in school. This was a decision that was made for the whole state. We don't have latitude to pick and choose not to do that. Ridge Clubs, all clubs at this stage of the game have to be approved not by the Board of Education. Clubs have already been approved by the Board of Education. The Ridge High Clubs and Clubs, these Clubs, they've been approved by the Board in years past. The staff have been approved. What's required is that the building administration, meaning the principal, is working with the advisor that the Board has already approved to make sure that they have a plan in place that allows for that club to meet and work in a safe manner. So what's happening is the activity advisors are going through an application process that's being processed by the building administration to make sure that the way they want to meet with the students is appropriate and it's safe and it provides for similar things that are happening with athletics, with the band, trying to keep the kids socially distant in their meeting time and space. So they have been approved by the Board, the advisors approved by the Board. At this stage of the game, it's just a matter of local building administration to work with advisors and make sure that they have a safe meeting plan. So I would encourage any students wondering about that to talk to their advisors, find out if their advisors are working with the principal to have their meeting plan approved. I do appreciate that not every email gets responded to. I'm trying to capture responses en masse because of the number of emails with some of my messages that I'm putting out on a weekly basis regarding SOS Express. I know that there were several questions about Cedar Hill School and some live meetings that occurred with off-day students, and we'll circle back to that. The question about middle-school labs, I'm not sure I understood. It kind of sounded like, what's happening with labs, maybe? Like, how are labs being handled? And I don't know if you could share anything on that one or not, Kristin. I wasn't quite sure I understood. Maybe you can see something in that email that.
I was. If it's different than the questions we've been asked about the high school or not. The only thing I could say, I don't know if it's talking about science specifically or also tech ed, but you know, if it's related to science, then it does have the same approach. I mean, they did not have an extra lab period in the middle school in the same way that the high school did. But incorporating labs are something that they are working up towards when they can do it in a safe manner.
Right. Okay. There was a question about teacher assignments and could student-teacher assignments change as a function of how students and parents select a hybrid or virtual? That is a possibility. We have a generally fixed number of employees, and if there's a large swing one way or another between students wanting to go hybrid or wanting to go virtual, we have to marshal the teachers to match up with the student requests. So if you see a lot of students moving one way or another, their teacher may or may not stay the same over time. It's something that we've pointed out in the past that is a possibility relative to the number of students in virtual or the blended learning program. There was a question about data security. I don't want to jinx us. I think with respect to a lot of the softwares that we're using, we are looking to make sure that these applications are COBA compliant. We do have an IT director who's pretty sensitive to the issue of data security. Knock on wood, I think we've done pretty well with respect to the different softwares students are using at the time. We did have an oops with some bus passes that I don't think that was really the nature of the kind of question that was being asked here, but we can certainly circle back and talk to Alex Blender about this and find out if he feels like there's any risks. I don't think he's got, I mean, there's always some level of risk, right? But in terms of the history that we've had recently, I think we've done pretty well. The last comment was about the rate of transmission in New Jersey and 11 schools being noted. I did notice that the New Jersey Department of Health added a new category to their data dashboard, if you will. If you go to NJDOH and you look at their data dashboard, you're going to see a new category that they are tracking in terms of schools, which wasn't there. Maybe it's a week old or so. It hasn't been there long. I just noticed it. So it's true. I did see the number 11 on there myself when I looked at it. In terms of the question about automatically remaining in the current selection, the answer there is yes. So if you don't request the change as a parent, if you don't request the change to leave virtual and go to blended, or leave blended and go to virtual, we will keep you in the same program that you have initially selected. So I don't know if you want to jump in at all, Ms. Fox, on the question about the liveness of the off-day at the elementary level and Cedar Hill School.
Well, what I would say is a couple of things. In our planning over the summer, when we were designing the instructional models, the models at the elementary school and the high school were different for very important reasons. You know, instruction in the elementary classroom when we're in school is focused largely on small-group instruction. And so what we were building was trying to maximize the ability of the teachers to work with small groups to do as much as close to what we do when we're in school as possible. We feel that that's where, you know, the bulk of real learning really, really takes place. And so with that, we were, we are focused on having, when we made the model, we were focused on allowing the teacher to work with the students who were in school in small groups and not really balancing a group of students on the computer at home and trying to work with small groups. And then the afternoon session would be when the teacher would have time for small groups with the virtual, the at-home students on their at-home day. So that was our design, and for very good reason. So as we've started the year, we certainly are looking for ways to increase what we're able to do based both on the teachers and the way they're able to budget, manage their time with the students in school and at home. And so we're looking for ways to increase that. But we want to do that as a district and carefully and thoughtfully as teachers are ready, and our network will support it. So we're in our, we finished our third day today, and we had, we didn't have very, we didn't have notable technology issues. I heard of just a few very small, easily overcome issues, and that's great. And so those kinds of things will allow us to think about increasing those opportunities as well, both at the elementary and at the high school level. So I mean, it is our intention to increase those opportunities for the at-home students. Right now, they have the morning meeting. I watched one today at Liberty Corner. It was wonderful. Both students were participating. Then they have the special area instruction that they attend on their at-home day, and then they have the Zoom-in check-in at the end of the day. So we will look for ways to work with the teachers and the administrators to increase that where we think it would be beneficial without losing that small-group instruction that we find so important.
Right, and certainly we've seen the challenge, right? We've been in enough classrooms. The challenge of what it looks like when a. The challenge of what it looks like when a teacher is trying to teach to the students in front of them as well as to students that are home, and what the capacity of doing so is like, based on the age level of the student at home, and how realistic is that as an expectation for really young learners to be able to do even the same level of difficulty of what some of our experience has shown us to be a challenge even with older students. So, you know, I think that was also part of the thinking in the initial design.
I definitely wanted to say that as well, so thank you. I was in a couple of high school classrooms, and what they're doing at the secondary level is an enormous challenge. And it was incredibly impressive from our readiness drill in August to see how they were able to balance both groups of students at the same time and have both groups of students doing some similar tasks and some different tasks. It's a lot, and those students are attentive. One of them is Juliette, who's on the screen, I saw her in her class today. So in the elementary level, like I said, that class meeting was great, the teacher did a great job, but I saw significant fidgeting and students not always listening, which is totally understandable. But is part of the reason why we want to take a measured and slow approach so that we don't overtax the students with too much Zoom either, you know, in an effort to do more. So I agree, that's 100% true. What the secondary teachers are doing is very difficult and very challenging.
And the only other issue I may note of, and I don't know if you want to speak at all to the issue of academic integrity. Again, we haven't had too much time behind us where we have some students 100% virtual and others that are now coming in on a blended basis. Can you share anything about what the thought process might be with regard to the different testing platforms that are used between the virtual students and the blended learning model students? I know we've talked about this issue even in committee. And the fact that teachers have to have the flexibility to use testing platforms that work for the students that they're working with.
Yeah, and as that comment suggested, cheating has always been an issue, and it has been an issue we've dealt with four years at Ridge High School and Burner's Township. So we obviously continue to work with it now, adapting to this completely new environment. And so those challenges are real that we are facing. We have limited instructional time, so we don't really want to do all testing on the limited time we have students in school, although sometimes that will need to happen. And we don't want to do all testing on the at-home days either. We are looking to allow teachers the enough flexibility so that hopefully a balance is achieved. So that, for example, if all testing was on Wednesdays, then students would have tests in every class on Wednesdays. So that's not necessarily a solution either. So to your point about resources, we have provided teachers with some new platforms that will help them with virtual assessment. We've worked with teachers on developing alternative assessments and performance-based assessments. But we also know that teachers will continue to employ traditional assessments. And so we're trying to work with them to give them, like you said, some of that flexibility to meet the needs of their students, their discipline, their grade level. And it is a really big challenge. We know that assessing in a virtual environment is different than in school environment. And so it's just an ongoing task, and those are some of the ways that we're looking at addressing it.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Fox.
Are we all set, Mr. Mercurian?
Yes, ma'am.
Can I just ask one of the questions? I was also wondering about the election day and the snow day.
Yeah, so there's a, sure, I totally understand, right? It seems like a conundrum, but the reality is what it is. There was a special, I say special, there was an executive order that specifically addressed election day and in-person instruction in schools. So that's why we have a special rule for election day this year.
Do any other board members have any questions or comments to anything that's been said?
I have, there's a question in general that people ask about the high school schedule. I hate to, when the kids have lunch, first period in their schedule, what, like, is that, like, do they go in? They have, there was a question, do they have to go in for that period? Or they, you know, or do they not come in, okay, come in later? Is it flexible, like, what's? But that's like a, you know, I feel like this, now that they've started this, there's a question about that. Like, your first period of class, does lunch count? I guess that's the question, I don't know.
You're asking if they have lunch first period, does it count?
Yes.
Right, well.
Like, do they come in for lunch, or do they, do they have to be there for lunch? Or do they come in, can they come in? You know how it was like with, you know, before this, when you had a study hall first period or last period? What was it, the senior option?
Yeah. I, you know, I don't.
Come in or you don't come in, I mean, I'm just asking a question, like.
Yeah, was that public comment tonight, Ms. Fox, or is that just something that, okay? So.
Did I ask the question, I just was a...
Yeah, no, I just want to make sure I didn't miss something from public.
No, no, that's just me.
Yeah, so, I mean, I don't think necessarily that Dr. Lazovic has issued any type of edict one way or another in terms of senior privilege relative to the lunch period. I know that there are designs to take advantage of the lunch period, but I can certainly put that question to him and get back to you.
I'm just saying, it should be a treat, like a regular class, since we have these shorter days and, you know, that's how it should be treated.
That's kind of the discussion we've had. I think he's right, there's no formal edict, but with a four-hour school day, it's a little different, you know, than when the seniors have that privilege when the day is longer.
I mean, barring any other news, I would say, go to school for your scheduled classes.
Thank you, Mr. Mercurian and Ms. Fox. So with that, we are on to approval of minutes. Please. I'll make a question. Ms. McCune and Mr. Salmon. And then a roll call, Mr. Syatt, please.
Sure. Ms. Beckman?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Salmon?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Ms. McEwen?
Yes.
Ms. Richmond?
Yes.
Ms. Corn?
Yes.
Ms. Woolridge?
Yes.
Ms. Gray?
Yes.
Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Syatt. Our next agenda item is the Finance Committee report. Mr. Salmon, do you have anything, or is it just the items to be moved?
Just the items.
So could we have a motion, and then perhaps if anyone needs Ms. Corn and Ms. White? And then if there's anything you need to share, Mr. Salmon?
No, the two items, one is a standing item, the first one is a standing item, the second one's professional development.
Okay. So then, Mr. Syatt, can we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Beckman?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Sam?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Ms. McEwen?
Yes.
Ms. Richmond?
Yes.
Ms. Corn?
Yes.
Ms. Woolridge?
Yes.
And Ms. Gray?
Yes.
Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Syatt. And our next item is the Personnel Committee report. Personnel Committee hasn't met since our last meeting, so we'll be meeting next Friday, the 16th. And we have 16, I believe it's 16, right, Mr. Syatt?
There's 17 items, and we're tabling, and we're tabling six.
We're tabling six, so we have 16 items, not including item six. And would someone like to make a motion? Mr. Salmon and Ms. McEwen? And then Mr. Syatt, if we could have a roll call, please.
Ms. Beckman?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Salmon?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Ms. McEwen?
Yes.
Ms. Richmond?
Are we fixing that one thing, that one, that one item?
Already fixed.
Okay, yes, then.
Ms. Corn?
Yes.
Ms. Woolridge?
Yes.
Ms. Gray?
Yes.
Madam President.
Thank you. So that brings us to the Policy Committee report. Ms. Corn?
Yeah, we didn't meet, we're meeting on Monday, next Monday, on the, was it the 12th? So I'll do a report next Monday.
Okay, thank you. And that brings us to the Curriculum Committee report, Ms. Richmond.
Hi. Curriculum met on September 11th, and since many of the administrators were zooming in from Ridge High School that day, the meeting started with a moment of silence and observance of 9/11. We talked about some of the summer curriculum writing projects for really all the departments. So over the course of the next few months, we'll be getting updates from all of the departments. But for this one, we talked about Fine and Practical Arts and Social Studies. When, just as a brief overview, when the school closure happened in the spring, the summer curriculum writing projects were modified to adjust the scope and sequence of the material to capture what did and didn't happen in the spring and what needed to be transferred to the fall of 2020. Each curriculum project team was asked to briefly summarize any changes to course content, objectives, or pacing. They were also asked what training or resources do the teachers need. Each team was also asked to identify where in the curriculum we already met the LGBTQ and disabled persons mandate, and where anti-racist initiative topics were already covered. And if so, how? The supervisors are creating an inventory of these topics in like a catalog of them to see where we're already meeting the mandate or if there needs to be revisions to these areas. Ms. Fox, Ms. Ray Fields, and Mr. Huncher met with a group of students over the summer and the spring, and we'll be getting an update about about LGBTQ disabled and anti-racist curriculum in the November BOECC. In terms of Fine and Practical Arts, there were a few highlights that Mr. Fackelman talked about. One was Financial Literacy Course. 131 students took this course online. There was a virtual meeting with students to explain the course, expectations, and assessments. And there were five sections of students with three teachers. All the students passed the test at the end, the final assessment at the end. He talked about internet web design and the challenges there. Much of the software had been Microsoft-based, and they didn't really work that well with the Chromebooks. So they had, they've been addressing that. And while addressing it, they also were able to work in some SEL issues related to online learning and social media etiquette to the first. We talked about the ABA Technology Course. This course will roll out next year and be housed under the Visual Arts at Ridge High School. The plan is to use a combination of a graphics course and an animation course to work with students. They will be focusing on three main units, self, home, and community, and how technology affects each of those areas. For Social Studies, Curriculum Writing, almost every single Social Studies course had had some time allotted to it for curriculum writing to address the needs of the teachers and the students as a result of distance learning in the spring. Upon reflecting on what did and didn't work, the biggest challenges the teachers encountered in the spring was assessment, the idea of how to maintain any kind of validity and reliability of assessments. Their number-one goal was to determine what were the most important understandings of each course and how they were going to assess students' understanding of those concepts and develop performance tasks and create rubrics for those things. There was an AP Articulation Project. This was a chance for the teachers to come together as a group to share challenges with assessing students and to share learning, things that they learned during distance learning from the spring. In May of 2019, the College Board released new course and exam descriptions for nearly every AP course. While the course content did not get changed dramatically, units and topics were reorganized. In many of the Social Studies elective courses, there are many LGBTQ disabled, anti-racist, and inclusive topics already embedded into those courses. So they're looking at how these courses are treated and how they can be updated and what is currently going on with what is currently going on in society. With the condensed time that teachers have with students this year, the Social Studies teachers work together to determine what are the enduring and essential understandings that they want students to have in their courses. There was also articulation between fifth and sixth-grade teachers and eighth and ninth-grade teachers so that they could account for where things were left off in the spring. The department also adopted some electronic resources for teachers for distance learning and blended learning for elementary and middle school levels. Grade four is moving to a standard-based report card this year, so they're, we're doing some work to finalize those report card standards. In regard to psychology, Ms. Ray Fields mentioned that the National Psychology Standards have been updated, so that that course needed to have some updating done as well to reflect the newest teacher teachings and learnings and sociology as well. In terms of the sophomore community service requirement, due to the pandemic and students' inability to gain volunteer roles in the community, the community service requirements for sophomores is suspended this year. And students are still encouraged to do what they can to volunteer in the community where they can. The rest of the meeting focused on return to instruction. And we did talk about assessments and how they are looking and adjusting to the gaps, the scope, sequence, pacing, and what, you know, again, to where we were and where we need to be. They talked about a little bit of diagnostic options. The challenge is that they don't want to hit the students with a ton of assessments, right, as they're all coming back into the school. But teachers need to know where the students are at. All courses are going to have to look at what skills the students have in terms of reading level, writing level, test-taking abilities and technology levels, and where the gaps are. They have been discussing the difference between differences between a skilled diagnostic and contact diagnostic. And this will vary a bit between course and grade levels. The lower grades are where the attention needs to be focused, in particular, K-5 reading and mathematics. They're exploring, doing some math testing options, still under discussion, to be further discussed. And right now, the focus is to, is transitioning the kids to school and thinking about what formative assessments can be used to discover the gaps and to start to fill those where, fill in those areas by teaching in the most efficient and meaningful ways. Mr. Colmmar explained that there was a study done with students that were impacted by Hurricane Katrina, which resulted in significant closures of the school. And the report talked about the best practices done to catch up or close the gap of deficiencies for those affected students. So rather than trying to fill all the gaps at one time, they found that pre-teaching skills was a better way to advance student learning in the grade level, in the grade-level skill and teach in the most efficient and meaningful ways. In terms of, Ms. Vitale Sandion gave an update about the Summer Kindergarten Intervention Program. Any students that, from the 2019, 2020 kindergartners that fell below the DIBELS benchmark as of February were offered a place in the Summer Intervention Program, which was created to minimize any skill gaps in phonological awareness. Phonological awareness is a foundational skills for literacy. Eighty-eight students enrolled in this course over the summer. Ms. Vitale Sandion had hired 13 teachers to teach virtually to those students. All the students met the goals of where they wanted them to be, and some even higher than the expected goal. Everyone thought that this was deemed a huge success. The parents were happy, the teachers were happy, the students were happy to be learning. There were still about 60 or so students that didn't participate in the program. Those students will have to be looked at closely. DIBELS Diagnostic is a short and fast way to screen students. Dibbles Diagnostic is a short and fast way to screen students, however, this assessment would need to be conducted in person potentially, not virtually, doesn't really work that way. Ms. Stotler gave an ESL Summer Program update. She explained that they did a very similar kind of summer program with ESL students in K-5. They participated in a physical education program that intertwined English language learning within it, and they grouped the kids K-2 and 3, 5. So it was kind of like a good way to get the English skills polished as well as get the kids up and moving. They also had a conversational reading comprehension class that, that worked really well, and they used Title III money to pay for that. In the hybrid, current hybrid model, K-5 teachers are trying to do some small group direct instruction via Zoom, but it's very difficult to do virtually. And as a concept that parents have a hard time understanding or accepting, is much easier to do small group instruction in person while other students do independent work. It's so, it's a challenge for our K-5 student, our teachers to be kind of grouping this kids into smaller groups. They're trying their best to do it. We talked a little bit about the small sizes and hybrid classes at secondary level. Classes were sectioned this year by normal sectioning and then, and then a cohort A and a cohort B. They did not section based on those who chose in-person and those who chose virtual. That would have just been completely impossible to do. So thus, it is completely random how many kids are, are in the A group versus the B group in person, because we just had no control over who was going to pick which, which platform or in-person or virtual. And then we also talked about K-5 virtual versus blended. Families continue to ask about the virtual option. The way K-5 was sectioned was very different than, than the 6 through 12. They needed virtual sections and hybrid sections with in-person teachers or virtual-only teachers. As parents continue to change their minds from one to the other, it is shifting those class sizes significantly. Depending on grade level, some virtual classes are large and some blended classes are either small or large depending on the grade. The concern is that students may have to be moved, may have to be moved to a different section or even moving a teacher from a blended to a virtual if the, if the, if the numbers necessitate it. It's a huge challenge to balance these numbers between the virtual and the blended, and it's something that everyone's keeping a very close eye on. No guarantees there. Ms. Howard talked about Option 2 at the high school and explained that because of the building space and issues and class sizes and the need to social distance, Option 2 is, is not going to be able to be offered in marking period 2. Mr. Misak explained about science labs. So he explained that, like, for, as an example, for periods 1 and 3, they share period 2 for labs. With the virtual model, period 2 is only happening on Monday and Thursday. Adding to that is the PE health class issue with many students that go, that go to, that PE and health is where the students, many of the students go to when they're not in lab. That, so the resolution is that the 6 to 7 credit labs are still happening and they, they are doing labs, but there won't be, there is not, right, currently an ability to do that additional lab period for students. So instead of going to lab period, they're either going to probably, they're supposed to go to their PE class or study hall, depending on what their schedule calls for. We also talked about Quest. And the teachers are having a definitely challenge with how to identify the students for Quest, but we were, we have an update for Quest at the October meeting, so I'll be able to talk to you guys more about that. Advanced Math 4, Mr. Coleman explained that the data that is already on grade, they were looking at what data they already have on grade 4, for Advanced Math Place, Math 4 replacement. And the only data they really have is the COGATS, is a way to find students that can think critically, problem solve, and that show an aptitude for mathematics. They want to use the quantitative and nonverbal sections of the Spring 2020, Spring 2020? COGAT, I think that's it.
It was February. It was February.
Yeah, February. Oh, I, oh, sorry, I wrote Spring, February, sorry. February. Students that land in the top 20% of the raw score for each elementary building could be identified to meet once a week with this Quest teacher for some advanced math. Teacher recommendations may be considered as part of the, part of the process, too. Let's see. We talked about some of the K-2 programming under Quest, but again, that is all being updated from this month. The SAT, we talked about, a little bit about that, and we, I think the last two Saturdays, we've had SAT testing done that was successful and safe. And the ECT is going to be held on October 24th. And just for the board members, the, the five-year curriculum cycle report has been attached to this, too. I know that was a lot. Is there, are there any questions? All right, we already had our next meeting, which was just this past Friday, and I will get those minutes out to everybody and report out at the next meeting. Thanks.
Thank you, Mrs. Richmond. Sorry, I'm just scrolling down in our agenda. Our next item is the Wellness Committee Report. Ms. White?
Wellness met on September 24th. And the first part of our meeting was spent going over the presentation that we had tonight, so I'm not going to repeat that all, and I'll just jump to the next topic, which had to do with the counseling program update for K-12. Ridge students will be accessing their counselors the same way as they have in past years, and this message will be sent out to students. And counselors are communicating their contact availability with students. A student will still come into the counseling suite and fill out a slip or email a counselor directly that an appointment is needed. Counselors try not to pull students out of a class that's meeting in person and can use lunch and study hall or the time after school to meet. The suite has been set up with identifiers similar to the rest of the Ridge for social distancing requirements, and students can have both in-person and virtual meetings. Senior season has begun and meetings are well underway. Transcripts have been verified and school profiles are ready to go. The post-secondary handbook for the class of 2021 has been updated to be a 26-page guide, including videos to explain every task a senior needs to complete and how to do so, and has been made available to students. Google classrooms for counselors are being used and weekly communications are being sent via email in classroom. At WHAMs, this is the first year of the looping model with counselors. As discussed last year, each group of counselors will stay with the same group of students throughout their years at WHAMs. Weekly communications have begun and counselors are working directly with students based on individual or group counseling needs. At the elementary level, K-5 self-management and growth mindset lessons are underway. Lunch bunch groups are being formed, and counselors are conducting lessons both in-person and virtually, depending on a teacher's schedules, and are working directly with the students based on their individual or group counseling needs. It's important to note that there is a form now in Genesis for parents that apply to all grade-level students. It's the acknowledgment of meetings forms, and it can be found in the parent Genesis portal under the tab Forms. As students may now be having one-on-one meetings with a counselor or a teacher via Zoom, parents are being asked to sign off on these meetings as an additional security for students. Lastly, there was an update on the Career Education Program Evaluation. And while many projects were postponed for the summer, it was decided that it was important to proceed with this one. The team undertaking this task is made up of one teacher from elementary, middle, and the high school level, as well as four counselors. The project entailed a mix of research and an initial survey of information to determine the current state of the state and the direction the team believes the program needs to move forward. They explored ACT career reports and Naviance's Expanding College and Career Readiness, to name a few documents. Life readiness and career readiness are two separate items. They looked at programs at the university and college level. Mr. John Brun, who heads the Senior Internship Program, is also involved. In terms of K-5 and middle school, the team is exploring whether the right questions are being asked at each grade level and are trying to determine where there may be holes in the curriculum. There is a lot of work to be done, and the team will continue to meet in November. The goal is to have a cohesive career planning and education plan for K-312. This work also ties back to the updated Senior Post-Secondary Handbook that now includes multiple pathways and options for students, such as community college, vocational and technical trade schools, and gap years, et cetera. And lastly, Ms. Fox shared that Caitlin Kardashian has received a $7,000 grant from Hackensack Meridian to be used by December 31st for vaping prevention. Our high school sacks will be working closely with her to develop programming. And our next wellness meeting will be October 22nd.
Sorry, I'm having some audio delay. My apologies. Did anyone have any questions from Ms. White? Okay, see, none. Our next item is the liaison reports. Does anyone have any liaison reports? No. Okay. Thank you. And then our next item is Board Forum.
We have another public comment session for.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Yes, of course I do. We have public comment on non-agenda items. Thank you, Mr. Crute. Ms. Fox?
There are a couple. Terry Laird, 20, Lurline Drive. "After an overwhelming response to a parent survey a number of years ago, where the parents overwhelmingly wanted our spring break to not coincide with the two weeks that most school districts have, the week before and the week after Easter, I would like to know why this is not being followed for the 2021-22 school year. Back when the survey was done, the year or so after had spring break coinciding with one of the Easter weeks. And since at that time, they took the survey results to heart and listened to the overwhelming response of parents, the schedule was changed. Please fix the 2021-22 schedule to have spring break, not one of the Easter weeks before. It's too late to be fixed." Barbara Geary, 66, Dryden Road. "As of June, A and B days will now be equal, but November is a disaster for the B cohort. Something needs to be adjusted, even if it is giving the B cohort access to the virtual teachers for a day. In regards to bring all students back into the buildings, we are just asking for you to begin to plan. Let's be proactive versus reactive. We are a resourceful community that is not being utilized. My fifth grader didn't have her morning meeting today because she has Spanish on Mondays and on Wednesday will not have an afternoon meeting. The hybrid model needs to be adjusted sooner rather than later. The virtual students are clearly at an advantage." Ripa Carta, 58, Independence Drive. "Thank you to the BOE for your continued efforts to manage hybrid and virtual learning. Teachers in general are doing a great job. Let's remind them not to penalize virtual students with comments directly at them in relation to extra teacher efforts that need to be expended to accommodate virtual students." Thank you. Lorraine Anderson, 31, Dryden. "How did Ms. Vitale determine that the 88 grade K students met their goals at the end of the summer program when the district refused to do a reassessment when requested? Where do we find the data that was just cited?" And that is it. Oh, wait, I'm sorry, one more. Alicia Martin, 118 Blackburn Road. "I am concerned with how assessments will be handled now that some students have returned to school. It seems inequitable that the, all virtual students will be taking assessments at home and have use of notes, the internet, et cetera, while the in-person students will be taking the same test in school with no access to these same benefits. To be blunt, the all-virtual students will easily be able to cheat. Additionally, with only one in-person learning period per subject each week, it seems like a huge waste to use that time for students to test. It is the one and only opportunity for teachers to actually engage face-to-face with their students. Until all students are back in person, all assessments should be given virtually, either on the All Virtual Wednesday or the tests made available online after school on the other days. It is the only equitable way for all students to be tested and maximizes the very little in-person teaching we have to actually be used for instruction." Oh, there is one more. Keith Molinari, 27, Franklin Drive. "It was stated that Board of Ed meetings cannot be held live due to a 25-person limit. Is this necessarily the case? Board of Ed members are elected and therefore hold a political office. Political activities are limited to 150 people or 25% capacity. By holding all meetings virtually, you are limiting the ability of the community to fully participate in local-level democracy. Virtual meetings are a poor substitute, much like virtual instruction." And that is it.
Mr. Mark Karian, is there anything now you'd like to tackle?
Well, going backwards, I think the, the comment there is kind of what we're taking a look at in terms of the available capacity and the definition of the different types of meetings and the capacity restrictions for those meetings. Interestingly, we generally have had much more participation in virtual meetings than we have ever had in in-person meetings. That being said, you know, we're, we're trying to figure it out. We talked about the assessment question already. There was a, a question going back to the summer. I don't know the answer to the question without speaking to Ms. Vitale, and Kristin, you probably don't either, but we can certainly circle back with her on that one. The first comment was about the school calendar and the timing of the spring break. I'm sure board members will be interested to look at that, but I'm sure we can, we can look at it. It is what it is right now. I think that was all I wanted to respond to.
I'd just like to comment, and maybe I'm not the only one from the board, and I'm not entirely clear on this, but I know from individual testimony, if you will, that students who are taking in-person tests are reporting having access to notes for certain things. So I'm not sure that there's any sort of unilateral determination on this. It sounds to me like it's based on the course and the teacher and the nature of the assessment. But I don't know if, Kristin, you might like to expound upon that a little more, because there does seem to be a lot of confusion.
About what? I mean, it is, it does vary by teacher, by discipline, by grade. So is that, I mean, that's true. What are you saying?
Well, one of the comments suggested, well, someone in one of the comments suggests, and I don't remember the specifics, so I apologize, but suggested that there was inherent unfairness because the students in the building were not, did not necessarily have access to notes, et cetera. And I'm just asking, you know, I haven't had a student in those circumstances, but I have heard parents tell me that they have had their in-person student have an assessment in which they were allowed access to notes.
I don't, I don't know. I can completely answer that without doing a little, you know, investigating. I would suspect that to be the case, that the effort is to equalize those environments as much as we can. So I wouldn't be surprised if that was happening, but it might not be universal. So I can look into that.
Erin, as someone who has two in high school, I can tell you, both of my students who have had in-person days, their teachers, when they gave tests, very clearly said to level the playing field, you will be allowed to use your notes for this assessment. So it definitely is being taken into consideration by teachers.
Thank you.
Not for nothing, but I think there's a lot of concern by students to not have seven periods of tests on Wednesdays. Like they don't want all their tests on Wednesdays. So that's just something we really have to avoid.
We agree with that. Anyone else? Okay, so then I guess we're now moving on. And my apologies to the public, that was an inadvertent. But now we'll move on to Board Forum. Board members? Ms. Corn?
I wanted to say a couple of things because my my daughter started their schooling today because they're aid students and they're so happy. It went really well. They're both really happy. And I wanted to say that, you know, since I try to read all my emails, but I'm like other people, I can't always get to them. And sometimes just scramble a little bit. And I have to say that the virtual learning hub was really, or the the learning hub was really helpful and the Ridge Minute, the Ridge Minutes, I was like, woo-hoo! I was like, what is this, this thing they have to on their phone? And it was really very informative and I thought, wow, like, they're really great. So I wanted to just throw it out there that that was really something that helped me and I feel like would help other people to go to know where it was and to use it. And it was like short and sweet and just got right to the point. And I just really appreciate it, especially when you're trying to do something new. My other thing was I wanted to comment on us going back next five days, which is what a lot of people want. And honestly, and I know we had some a comment, like people want to use all our brilliant parents that we have, which I know we have a lot of brilliant people in town. And it doesn't matter how brilliant everyone is because you can put together the best plan. And if it doesn't get accepted by the executive Somerset County Executive Superintendent, then it doesn't matter. So if people want to change anything, they really have to either write to him or write to the governor because nothing is out of our hands now. We can make the best plan ever and it doesn't matter until the parameters are changed for us getting back to school. So although everyone can write us emails, it'd be, you'd be using your time more wisely and using your brilliance more wisely by writing to the governor and to the executive superintendent for Somerset County because that's where the changes have to come in order for us to move forward with our plans. So and that would be great because the more people we can get to make noise, maybe we get to get our kids into school, especially younger ones, five days. And that's, I just want to say how how happy, again, I have to reiterate how happy my my daughters were going to school. They're just really happy. She's excited to go back tomorrow. So that make me happy. And I wanted to thank everybody for all the work done to to make that happen. And I'm so glad we got to do it. It's very exciting.
Any other comments from board members? Nobody? I just kind of like to piggyback a little bit on what Mrs. Corn said and and say that I do like your suggestion that, you know, let's put those great minds to work. And I would add that my concern as a board member is that we've got an awful lot of tasks for the the staff and administration to be focusing on right now to do the very best at the program we're running. So not in any way to be dismissive, but I would say I think we need to be careful with this idea of we'll just put together a plan. Well, we could put together ten plans. We could use up all the man hours, man and woman hours, to put together ten plans. And to Mrs. Corn's point, we're not even being invited to bring them to the to the point of approval process yet. So I'd prefer to see us as we are, watching our administration and their entire team try to perfect and improve what we are delivering now. And there were a lot of great questions this evening. And I know that the public input is taken seriously. On that note, I'll just transition to an earlier comment and say that the Board of Education recognizes that a lot of email has not been answered. It's it's quite a volume of email. You'd be amazed. And we are aware that we could do better in that area. Mr. Mark Carrion is kind enough to handle those that have a very specific nature to to, which sometimes takes some time on his part. But there are some that we as a board will try to get to more routinely. We've spoken as a board about how we might start to approach that. So we ask you to understand that we do receive an incredible volume of email and it's not the easiest thing to just, you know, shoot out a response quickly. So that's all for my comments. Anyone else? No, all right. Well, seeing no other Board Forum comments, could we have a motion to Mrs. Corn? And a second? Sorry. Oh, and Mrs. White? Thank you. And all in favor? I see all hands, Mr. Sait. Everybody have a great night.
Thank you. Good night.